I'm gonna go over some open this town hall meeting. This is being live on the brush country chamber channel. You will be able to watch later. This video is Stockman's National Bank, we want to give them a thank you. The brush country chamber commerce was created to improve the quality of life in the area by promoting economic development, providing a healthy business environment, promoting programs of civic, social, and cultural nature. We are a 501(c)(6) organization and is not disqualified to engage in political activities. We do not endorse any candidates or parties and will continue to stay neutral throughout this process. I will be, my job today will be the timekeeper. Nicole will go over a little bit of, you know, what we've got going on for the statements and questions. I've gone over this with you guys just a little while ago. When y'all see me hold up this 30 second left sign, that's when y'all have 30 seconds during your opening statement or your question. And after which I will hold up the stop sign and you'll only be asked to stop immediately. Pass those over to Nicole. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Villarreal. Again, thank you so much for coming out and joining us for this nice town hall meeting. I work as a moderator that will conduct the meeting and I have the responsibility to interrupt the proceedings, enforce the ground rules. Opening statement is straight ahead. You have two, uh, two minutes per question. Um, again, the timekeeper will hold up the 30 seconds and stop at the appropriate time. Uh, if the stop sign is held up, you will be allowed to finish your sentence only. All questions are screened and sent to the day before. No questions will be taken at the door from the audience. When it's your time, the moderator will come on you, approach the mic at the podium at that time. When speaking, speak directly to the moderator and audience. Please do not speak directly at any of the other candidates. Vober language or hostile motions will not be tolerated. BCCC reserves the right to remove any candidate or audience member from the venue at any time. Ladies and gentlemen, do you agree to these terms?
Yes.
Alrighty, um, well, we're ready to go. You can start with the first candidate and question.
Okay, starting from this side?
Okay, that's fine. Whichever side you want.
I'm like starting from which. Okay, so we're gonna start with Ms. Koraleski.
Good evening. My name is Oralia Mary Garcia Koraleski. I was born in Cattula but raised in Illinois. My father was Ezekiel Garcia. They called him El Colorado or Red. My mother was Manuela Casciano Garcia. I had twin sisters, Olga Garcia Chavera, Ofelia, they called her Fifi. And she was Garcia Roman. Two brothers, Mike Garcia and Arturo Garcia. My husband and I moved to Cattula in the year 2000. We've been here 24 years and I am an owner of property and business here in Cattula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanis?
My name is Stanislado Lopez. I'm known here in town by Tanis. I've been a resident of Cattula for 64 years. A family, I come from a family of 10 siblings. Uh, my parents recently passed away. I've, I've been serving the committee for over 20 somewhat years in different administrations with different mayors and different city managers. And I would like to continue serving the citizens of Cattula to my best of my capacity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little more winded than my, my friends here. And I hope that I can speak to you all as friends. I know many of you. Uh, I am, my name is Sandra Luna. I am from Cattula. Originally born here, did not live here on my lot, but am a longtime citizen of Cattula. Uh, I was a border patrol agent for 22 years. I served my country, protecting and enforcing laws of the United States. I supervise personnel, maintain budgets, I enforce policies, I manage projects. I enforced forfeitures and asset forfeitures, which I think is a good prerequisite to the mayor's position. Currently, I'm a tax preparer for H&R Block and Mr. Barber's right here in the office. We served a lot of the community. We serve Cattula, Dilly, Pierceville, and the surrounding areas. And not only do we do H&R Block, but we also help citizens who have questions with their social security or they don't have internet or they don't, so we, we try to assist them in many ways. Uh, my desires and interest for the city of Cattula is to reclaim transparency and integrity to the office. That is my biggest goal. Uh, I want to be there for the employees. I want to be there for the citizens. I want to be there for retirement purposes. I, I want to address some of these things that I believe need improvement. Not that our city's doing bad or wrong, but some improvement is always needed. One of my goals, of course, we've heard many things about the city office. We've heard things like, uh, funding being stolen, employees receiving funds, employee or, uh, working at somebody's house with city funding rumors. You're always gonna hear a lot of rumors, but you and I and our community deserve the truth. And in truth, what I, what I mean by that, maybe true or not, I said rumors. But what about transparency and integrity? Let us give you the information, let us give you the fruitful information and clarity in that office. We shouldn't have closed books behind that door. That office belongs to the city and the citizens of Cattula, the taxpaying citizens of Cattula, you and I. And we should know what's going on in the office. And you should be able to go in there and say, hey, what about this? And it should be, here it is ma'am, here it is sir. Let you see it, okay? That's what I'm about. That's one of my biggest goals. Secondly, uh, I know we have, uh, animal control, but we still have issues in the city with animal control. Uh, we need to address some of those things. Sanitation and disposal, code enforcement. I like code enforcement. Uh, I think that we should, we need it, but not for harassment purposes, okay? We need it for code enforcement to help the people and protect our citizens. And one of the other things is, uh, streets, facilities, equipment, but most of all employee enhancement and training, employee retirement, employee pay, and things like that. So I hope that and pray and I ask you for your vote on May 4th.
Mr. Samora?
The name's Alfredo Samora, a native of Cattula. I think that I'm, uh, an individual that's constantly running for the school board, win or lose. I want to congratulate the chamber simply because, uh, anybody that wants to represent the voters should have an opportunity to talk to the, to the community and express what they feel, what they do, and, uh, request their votes, uh, because they feel that they deserve it. Uh, this is an opportunity for anybody and everybody, uh, to come and present themselves, uh, to the voters that elected them to office or are going to elect him or her. I'm an ex educator. My education was usually in Wisconsin. I have a master's in administration. I'm a, I'm a teacher. I have run multi-million dollars for operations. Uh, I spend, uh, Sotix as well, so if you're familiar with that organization. It's a multi-million organization. We cover, uh, six counties, half facilities, uh, over, uh, all rural Texas. But, uh, I've been in, uh, in administration and my experience is a little more diversified than just an educator because I've been on the school board, I've been, uh, a city mayor, I've been, uh, in the water district. I'm in the appraisal district. So my experience in serving the community, uh, has been very versatile. And naturally that gives me a lot of experience, uh, that I can provide good leadership and, uh, create vision that perhaps we need. We have a very serious problem that our system is not educating our, uh, our students. One other thing is that they, uh, more seriously is that, uh, about 80% of our students are functioning below grade level. That means that over a thousand kids in our system are not even getting, uh, the education that they deserve. Uh, so, uh, the need is tremendously. We need somebody with new vision, uh, new ideas. And, uh, I hope that I get that opportunity.
Thank you.
Just give me one second. Alright, I'm ready when you are.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and begin, uh, the questions and again, we're just gonna go down. Okay, so Ms. Koraleski, if you would come up first? Question number one?
Oh, we're gonna go?
Oh.
It's up to you if you want, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The question. It's okay. But I'm gonna ask you question number one.
Well, thank you. Um, on a personal level, um.
Let me ask the question first so that the audience can.
Oh, of course.
Can hear with the question.
Okay.
Have you previously served on a governing board of any type or as a leader in any organization? If so, please briefly describe the organization or organizations, your role, and the number of years you served in that capacity.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to just personally say that my husband and I celebrated our 64th wedding anniversary in May and then our good Lord took him home, uh, June 21st. So that was a great achievement in my life. Um, I, we have three children, nine grandchildren and five great, great, great grandchildren. Um, I served as the chair of the Democratic Party. I said, I, uh, I was, I think instrumental in forming our Main Street City. Served on that board for seven years, councilwoman for, uh, four years. I, uh, I think that I was able to bring some gifts to all of those organizations that I served. There's a lot of other things that I have done, but those are important and I feel that I am a good leader. We had our own business for over 40 years. Very active in our church. I'm a communion minister and a lecturer. So, uh, again, I think that I have some gifts that I'm more than glad to share with our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lopez, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of the city of Cattula?
The strengths are the location that we are located at right now. We, we're in between Corpus and Eagle Pass or Pasol. Or, or, wait, our most strength is, is that we have a diverse of, of different areas that we're strengthening. We're hard, we, our airport, we have the rail system and we have Interstate 35, which is ideal for us to, to progress in, in, in the, later on in life, later on in the city. Because we can accommodate a lot of, a lot of new companies to come in because the cost of Laredo is very expensive. The, it, it's very costly to, to, uh, maintain a company in Laredo because there's too much congestion and we're looking at, at other companies to branch out to Cattula because we have the ideal location to, to serve those companies at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Luna? What do you believe is the role of the city council in our community?
The role of the city council is, uh, because it is, is developed as an elected officials. You've got a mayor and your city councilman. That is to represent the city of Cattula, not your, not your own interests, not, not your own ideas, but representing the people that actually put you there. In my last, last election, I lost by 700 votes, uh, to, to the incumbent, which is fine. But what the incumbent or anybody ever did was come over to the 700 of us that lost and asked us why we voted against it. So they didn't represent me. They didn't represent a lot of us. And so the representation of the city is the utmost important and the survival of the city and doing things to improve our city. Uh, I know that HEBs try to come here many a times, Walmart's try to come here many a times. There's different reasons why they haven't. And if it's for tax reasons, then we should maybe give them the tax break so we can get some of those companies back in here for better development to our city and the people of Cattula. If you get sick, where do you go? You have to ride, drive 30 miles before you can see someone, right? If you need to go to doctors and have good doctors in the area, you have to go to Laredo or San Antonio. So there's things that we need to develop for our city and for our people. So representation of our community is the utmost important.
Thank you. Mr. Samora? Mr. Samora, if elected, what will your priorities be?
The academic education. I just mentioned that, uh, large of our population, 80% of our population are not getting an education. That and also, uh, the taxpayer put out a lot of money, uh, over a million dollars in, uh, new construction. In the meantime, we have a lot of facilities and that, uh, that money was enticed because we were gonna fix all the facilities that we have. We have about 12 facilities that are really, have never been maintained and are of no use to us. What are we gonna do with that? Say, so, uh, another thing that, uh, I, uh, am a guess is, uh, this, uh, idea of, uh, prevention, the students and letting, letting the teacher wear guns. You see, what happened in your vault, it was not that they didn't have guns or enough deputies. It was that when the time came and they got called to, uh, sir, they were not there. I do have a, uh, a concept that, uh, we need, uh, the idea is to create a safety zone as soon as possible. Sending them to, from one place to the other is not the solution. I propose a bit because we're in the process of, uh, building a new high school that within every classroom, we create a, uh, gun-proof, uh, room where the, as soon as, uh, the, the, there's a warning that something is happening that is endangering our children, that they go into that room instead of sending them to one place and creating chaos and people running, uh, over each other. So, uh, uh, we have to have, uh, to have leadership that has a little more vision and creativity and addressing what we need.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Koraleski? Ms. Koraleski, why is serving on that council important to you?
When I served before, it was very important to me to, um, of course, the first year I had to learn what it was all about. So there was like, didn't contribute much of anything, just trying to learn the, uh, rules and regulations of that. Serving on the council to me is very important because, um, I feel that as a councilwoman, I work for the citizens and I want to always be open to their issues and their concerns. And then I can bring their voice to the table. One of us alone at the table can do nothing. It has to be the five of us. But I feel that listening to our citizens and addressing them and their needs is, is, is what is important. I also feel that I'd like to go in a different direction with our council. We have many great accomplishments, very big, wonderful accomplishments. I want to go a different direction. I want to, these are goals, not promises. I want to see that we get another grocery store, uh, another branch of a bank. Competition is extremely good for our citizens. If so-and-so has got bananas for $10 and so-and-so's got bananas for five and they're good bananas, you know, you can go for five instead of 10. So, and the other thing that's important to me, another goal would be to do things for our children. Takes five of us to make a vote, but I'm gonna strive to do things. Theater, skateboard, someplace where the kids can roller skate, a movie theater. These are things that are for the future and for our young children and beneficial to all of our citizens and also promotes jobs. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez? Mr. Lopez, is there something in particular that you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council?
We have pending projects. Uh, one of the pending projects is, uh, uh, reconstruction of Plaza Florida to bring it back to the original state. My, one of my goals is to start organizing activities for, for kids like Ms. Koraleski said, through the school and get the county involved in getting different programs to, to, to educate our kids during the summer and keep them active and, and not getting involved in drugs and whatever else illegal activity they might get involved in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Luna? Ms. Luna, are there any areas within the city of Cattula that you believe can be improved upon?
Uh, there's always room for improvement, always, always. Uh, if we, if we stop improving, we think that we've done it all right already, then, then we're, we're just stunting ourselves. I wish I would've had a little more time for this, but, uh, time being, this is what we have. Areas for improvement. I, I really believe that, uh, we need city, city policing. I, I really do. Some of our areas, small towns, have city policing. Why we don't, I don't know. Uh, I know La Salle County has done a, a pretty good job of trying to keep everybody safe. But I think we need city policing. And, uh, I know that for city purposes, that La Salle County has not been able to help a lot with code enforcement and things like that. Again, not for harassment or hindrance, but to assist and to make things safer for our city. So I think city policing is one of those areas that we need to look at. Uh, that would help us out with, uh, vagrancy. That would help us out with, uh, helping the, the, this businesses, visiting the businesses. Sometimes our La Salle County is just too stretched out. And I think that a little bit of a, a city police in our area would really be fruitful, uh, for our citizens and safety. Uh, the, the, La Salle County tries to be at all those schools. I think some of that city policing could, could be helped by having a, a nine to five, a nine, nine to 12 small police department to help out with those, some of those things. The other thing I'd like to see come back is the return of Main Street rejuvenation. I, I drive down Main Street sometimes and it needs some improvement. We still have potholes that, that are covered just by a cone. Anybody could, you get a tractor trailer, there could be a big accident. So some of those things need to be addressed, but nothing major that I can see right.
Thank you. Mr. Samora, in your opinion, what, um, attributes and behaviors are essential for school board members?
One is, uh, being humble. We have a situation where longevity is really sometimes, uh, not a positive thing if those individuals, uh, take for granted their positions and don't want to talk to the voters. Uh, I think that this, uh, uh, is a good example of individuals that are interested in representing the community, but they don't want to talk to the community. So you question their sincerity. The, the, the quality is, you have to hire an administrator that, uh, you're gonna allow him to think. We have two types of situations. One, where the, the superintendent is hired and the superintendent will allow the staff and the, the, uh, the board to dictate what he should do. And then the other one is the individual that carries a, a universal mission and addresses the whole organization. And that's the kind of individual that we need. Uh, sometimes we have it, but most of the time the board wants to tell the superintendent how things should be done. And usually it doesn't come out of, uh, knowledge. It comes out of a personal agendas that, uh, shortchange people. You know, one of the things is that, uh, I'm concerned about is really the lack of recognition that teachers do not receive. We have a lot of, uh, homegrown teachers that have given their lives to, uh, the, uh, community and the students and the school system, but they are not, have never been recognized. I think that we need to bring those, uh, individuals and, uh, recognize them for all the, the time and efforts that they put into the education.
Real quick, uh, for the audience, can I ask you, uh, to please silence y'all's phones during this meeting? Um, I understand if y'all have to take a phone call and step out for something important, but for the duration of this meeting, can we please have the phone silence? Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Korlowski, if you could make one change or improvement during your potential term, what would that be?
One change. I would like to see that something would be approved for the improvement and safety of our children. Again, something for our kids to do. Our teenagers have really nothing to do here. And I would like to have a safe place for them to go and enjoy, regardless of what it is, but have a place to hang out and not in houses falling down that could be, you know, a place for drugs. So that's what I would like. If we do anything else and everything else is extremely important, but I am going to really work hard at trying to get something for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez, the city council must render decisions regarding the implementation of policies and or programs that may be somewhat difficult. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Well, I don't claim that I know everything, but I've been, I've been addressing certain policies that have been, they're on the books, you know, to follow. My, my answer is to, I have to work with four other individuals on the council. I've been working on certain policies that, that I feel that need to be implemented or need to be updated. And to me, I feel that we, we're each a different mind. We've got a different mindset. And my, my, my reason is to try to work with the council for the betterment of the city and for the protection of all the individuals here. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Luna.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Luna, do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed?
I have no conflict of interest. Doesn't mean that I haven't done anything, but I don't believe that I have anything to lose or anything to gain, really, other than the trust of the people in me becoming the mayor of Cotula. I have been, I've had businesses before. I, I know what it takes to run a business. I do taxes, so I know some of the procedures that come through that. I know some of the things that the city council is involved in and has to approve or not approve. I have no code enforcement. Again, I mentioned forfeitures. I know what it is to do asset forfeitures or how to forfeit public, community properties and things like that. So I have some guidance there. I have some guidance in, again, with forfeitures, with security purpose. So I think I get help there with, with the vote, with the security of, of equipment, with security, things like that. So I have, I'm multifaceted in, in, in my knowledge. Not that I know it all, but I, I consider myself a jack-of-all-trades master of none. During my tenure as border patrol agent, I oversaw the fleet department in our station. So I know what it takes to take care and maintain of our vehicles. I was involved, again, in asset forfeitures. I did enforce laws, you know, so I know there's procedures. I was the chairperson for the, our, our health and safety department. So I'm, I'm familiar with OSHA and I'm familiar with some of the things that our employees should do and not do, or how to better protect them and what to enforce. So things like that, I think, I don't see that I, I have anything, you know, to be scared of or that would conflict.
Thank you. Mr. Samora, in your opinion, how important is it for a school board to know its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
It's a must. If a board has a responsibility is to hold everything accountable, you know, not to, to micromanage or, but to create policies and procedures that are going to benefit the implementation of programs, but not to tell the teachers and the administrator how to react in implementing the curriculum, but also be, to be aware, like I said, one other thing is that eighty percent of our individuals, our students are not functioning at a great level. There's too many students and we have another problem that we don't graduate a lot of students by graduating class. We're averaging about five or six individuals out of perhaps, let's say hypothetically, a hundred graduates. That means that we're only graduating by about five or six. Not even the top ten are making it through college. I think that that's a serious problem that somebody's got to look into it and create some change or awareness that's going to be better that way.
Thank you. Ms. Korlowski, please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the city council?
Well, I have to be honest, all my life, I'm not a politician, so I didn't do anything like that. But I was always very involved in our church as pastor council, the Quipopromotor, which is the pastor council in Spanish, to serve our Spanish community and always involved with my children in school. They went to Catholic school. I was involved as cheerleading coach, was involved in softball for girls as a coach for many things. Again, like I said, really nothing political. The first time I ran for anything was when I got on the council. I'm still not a politician, but I, I feel that I have some gifts, good work ethics. Being, having our own business for over forty years, I feel that I can communicate with most people. I hear what they're saying, I respect what they're saying. We all have opinions and we have to handle each other's opinions with respect. And if we can't do that, then we can't work anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez, what previous community involvement have you had in Cotula or another city?
In Cotula, I've served under parent policy council with the community service agency out of Carrizo Springs. I've served as a parent policy council representative for six years. My goal is to work with young children, teenagers, and of course include the elderly in some kind of traditional programs to bring the traditional things back into the, into our community to where the, the different age ranges can intermingle with themselves and learn different traits that took place a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Luna. Based on your knowledge of city government, what do you see as top priorities for the city and why?
One of the things that I'd like to work with and I think that we need to improve on is emergency management. We've been, we've, we've seen a couple of things where, where in the past, the big freeze we went through. I, I do believe that we have to have some improvement there. And by me saying emergency management, there's different types. In border patrol, I was a master exercise practitioner. And so what we did was we made tabletop exercises and things like Mr. Samora spoke of, tabletop exercises where we brought the, the city councils or the mayors or the sheriff department or the health and safety departments into a tabletop exercise. And we relay information, we set up a scenario, a shooter, a freeze, things like that. So I think that if we get more well-burst in emergency management, because it's a degree of, it's like, it's a, it's a pyramid, pyramid. And so you have to build this foundation so you become better at responding to emergency situations, okay? So I think that some of those traits that I have would help us there. That's one. Two, employee benefits. I believe I've seen some of the city employees when they retire and, and the minimal support that they've gotten for whatever reason, whether it was training or maybe we're in a different, wrong program or things like that. But I think employee retirement and employee, employee benefits are essential. Thirdly is employee buy-in. If you don't let the employees have a buy-in into their, their trainings and their jobs and, and in the betterment of the community, how are you going to have a good person representing the city of Cotula? And I think those are some of the traits that are quite important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Samora. Mr. Samora, what is the best way to address differences of opinion on the board or between the board and the administration?
You know, we live in a democracy and usually the majority rules. There has to be differences. And one of the problems that longevity creates is that everybody starts singing the same song. So there's no allowance for difference of opinion. Everybody rides the same train. And the decisions that they make is really not well thought of. To the administration, you have to, if you're going to hire a leader, you have to believe that that individual knows what he's going to be doing. You know, we have a new superintendent. I think that he has to be allowed to think on his own and create some new programs that have never been thought of. Whether it's statement and conservative and doing anything different. And that's why the system doesn't change. We have to create vision and we have to deal with the situation. We cannot be, we have to be problem solvers. The board has to be an institution that creates solutions, not find excuses of why we're not doing well. You know, for the, everything that, that we support, it's not something that we're going to do new or innovative. It's finding the reasons of why we're not doing very well. And that has to stop.
Ask them again, different people. Same question, different person.
Okay.
We're going to repeat, we're going to ask.
We have about twenty minutes left, guys. If y'all have it in, y'all for, to keep going.
Ms. Korlowski, what do you believe are the three greatest strengths of the city of Cotula?
Oh, the strength I see in the city of Cotula is all of our staff, employees, our leadership and our city council. I feel those are very, very, very important and strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lopez. Mr. Lopez, why is serving on the council important to you?
Ever since I was a young man, my influence, I was influenced by my grandfather. I would see the injustices that the, the former city employees no longer, some of them are no longer here with us, were kind of rude and they would not give the elderly person the courtesy that they deserved at the time. That is the reason I was motivated to run for the council. And I do continue with the same philosophy as to continue serving the public because we're here to serve the public. The older, the citizens of Cotula are the ones that pay our bills, pay the citizens, pay the employees. They're the ones, the citizens are taking care of us to support our families. And I think we need to show much more leadership and respect for the elderly and the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Luna. If you could make one change or improvement during your potential term, what would that be?
One change?
One change.
Transparency. Transparency is my biggest beef right now with the city office, is transparency. I want, I want the taxpaying citizens of Cotula to know what's going on. It's their office. It's their office. I want them to be able to go in there and know, can be comfortable to ask questions.
Mr. Samora, could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Well, that's what I mean, that sometimes longevity is not a positive because we start just agreeing and having complete consensus without any debate or any difference of opinion. So you have to be true and you have to have your own ideas, philosophies, and ideas of how things are going to get better. You cannot just be the status quo. It doesn't matter that the majority might be for something, but if you just give in, what are you there for? You have, you, one individual creates the difference, but that individual has to be free and independent of mind and thought.
Are there any areas within the city of Cotula that you believe can be improved upon?
Oh gosh, there's always room for improvement, for sure. I do believe that, that we need to do a lot more infrastructure. I do believe there's a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of roads that need to be fixed. A lot of the, a lot of sewer and water lines have got to be done. I think along transparency, I think that we should let our citizens know because when I sat at the table, they just thought we did nothing. All these roads are not fixed, you know, this and this and that. I tried to explain, we don't just throw dirt on a road and fix it. We have to do the water lines, the sewer lines. So improvement, there's a lot that has to be improved yet, but with God's grace, we will get it all done. Thanks.
Mr. Lopez, please tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on the city council?
I'm willing to work with my co-council members in implementing certain policies and conducting city business that needs to be conducted. I'm here to represent the public and I'm not, I don't hide from any criticism. I accept praise and I'm willing to work with the public and I'm willing to take it, ideas from the public, which I've done in the past and I've tried to implement with the citizens to talk to the council to see if they can be implemented in our city. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Luna.
Yes.
The city council must render decisions regarding the implementation of policies and or programs that may be difficult. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
What is my approach to handling controversial and complicating issues? I think the whole government approach, it should be not, not just what is in the best interest of certain people and make my decisions, again, Ms. Korlinsky said, with God's word because he's the one that that guides us through everything. We can't do anything without him. But justice, justice, when you make those decisions, who is it affecting, and how is it affecting them? And is it the right move? Are you going to make a decision that is going to just represent one person? Or are you going to make a decision that's going to make, again, the whole government approach, the whole people? So the city of Cauthula is made up of its citizens, and you should make those decisions based on what is in the best interest of those, that community.
Thank you. Mr. Samora. What are your thoughts on the school district's programs for special education students, English language learners, and gifted students?
Well, you know, I just mentioned, across the board, our, our students are not getting an education. You know, the special ads, in all of this formula, the special children's are naturally, if the normal kids are getting shortchanged, you can agree that the special ads are not being paid attention to and are not taken care of. So the whole system needs to be accountable. All our student populations, one of the reasons is that we run a punitive educational system where we don't, we deprive more than with punishment. You know, punishment and trying to force the education down people's, students' throats ain't going to work. So we need something that's more sensitive and more pro-student. And we have to understand the quality of student that we have and each individual's need. So we have to, again, take a very good look at the whole system and come up with something better that's going to upgrade our student population. We cannot go from one generation to the next without understanding that we're lacking in education.
We are now done with the questions, and are now going to give everyone a two-minute closing statement.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank the chamber for doing this. I think it's imperative that our citizens get to know who we are and what we stand for. So thank you very much for doing that. And then thanking our citizens that came out tonight, I really appreciate that as I honestly just feel that I would like to ask our citizens to get out and vote, do early voting, beginning the 21st, and then our election is May 4th. Also, remind the citizens, our city election is citywide. So anybody that's a registered voter can come out and vote. It's not like precincts. I am humbly asking for their support and their vote, and it'd mean a lot to me to be able to be their voice at the table. They could come to me at any time with any issue and concern, and it'll be addressed. So I humbly do ask for their support and their vote. Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Well, humbly ask for your vote, support. I want to continue serving the citizens of Cauthula. I'm here for any, to meet with the citizens of Cauthula. I've always shared concerns and praises. I'm willing to take the bull by the horns. I'm willing to work with the citizens of Cauthula. I'm not afraid to work with organizations. I like to get involved. I like to continue serving the citizens of Cauthula in the best of my capacity. And I humbly ask for your vote and support, May the 4th. Thank you.
So in closing, the office of the city of Cauthula belongs to the people of Cauthula, okay? I look forward to hearing your concerns and ideas for building a better city that is prepared for the future. I ask for your support, and I'm fully prepared to give you my time and hard work if, if I'm elected the next mayor. Your vote and your support is greatly appreciated. I am seeking to represent you, each one of you, and our city. I would like to humbly ask you for your vote on Saturday, May 4th, and let us be Cauthula strong with honesty, integrity, and transparency.
Well, again, I want to thank the chamber for this opportunity, and let me say, don't get defeated, because we're for you here. It's a start. And this kind of forum is needed, and it will grow, because of you and because of the people that are here tonight. This is the future, and we need it, because our world is changing. We're becoming a little more versed, and people are becoming more knowledgeable and more aware, there's more criticism, more allegations, more investigations. So we're mainstream, and we have to be ready. And this kind of forums are essential. People have to start talking to the community. We cannot allow individuals just to run on popularity. You know, they might win, but those individuals are, the only difference, it doesn't matter who it is, those individuals have to have their own reasons of running and what they expect to do as individuals, not to join a team and just follow the status quo. Win or lose, Alfredo Samora will always be an advocate and involve in some way, advocating for something better for the community. So I thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Samora.
All right. Well, in closing for us, ladies and gentlemen, thank you guys so much for being here today. It means a lot to us. Again, as Mr. Samora said, you know, this is, it's still small. This is our third, this is our third town hall meeting we've held in this, in this type of environment. And in fact, we have a couple of people in the audience that were involved in, in some of our previous town hall meetings. And to you guys, I say thank you, and to the rest of the audience, I say thank you all for showing up. It means a lot to us here at the city, at the, at the Chamber of Commerce that, that we're seeing some support from, from the citizens and from the local community. That's the reason why we're doing this.